Jane, are you ready? Okay, thank you. Very good.
This conference will now be recorded.
Of May 12th is now in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy May 12th. Okay. Go through board members. Thomas Warren's here. Mr. Young. Mr. Young is here. Mr. Mandel. Mr. Mandel is here. Mr. Sweeney. I saw you before. Mr. Sweeney's here. Mr. Dell. Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews. Mr. Andrews. Mr. McCory is here. Is Mr. Bond here? Okay, I do not see Mr. Bond. Okay. We are full board, so we will proceed. First item is PB 21-21 Hudson Crossing Monument Sign and Location Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Once again, my name is Seth Mandelbaum. I'm a partner with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg, and Stout. Pleased to be here once again with Nicole Vasquez of Onyx Equities, the owners of the Hudson Crossing Industrial Park, formerly known as Bradley Corporate Park. We're here once again regarding proposed monument and directional signage at 100 Corporate Drive, which fronts on Route 303. The board had some comments, as you may recall, last month's meeting, regarding the size of the proposed monument sign, and also asked for some clarification on the directional sign regarding its location vis a vis the curb on the private corporate drive roadway. We believe we've addressed both of those comments in our latest submission, and I'll hand it over to Nicole now, and she'll take you through a brief presentation on those updates. And then hopefully the board will appreciate the work that's gone in and will feel comfortable giving us preliminary approval and letting us head over to the zoning board in Akerbor for those reviews before we will come back to you for final. Nicole?
Thanks, Seth. Good evening, members of the board and members of the public. As Seth mentioned, we're back here again tonight regarding the signage for 100 Corporate. Just a brief refresher as to what we presented a few weeks ago. We're before you for two signs, a monument sign on frontage of 100 Corporate and a directional sign on the northern end of the lot. One second here.
Okay. Anything else?
Let me just, yeah, sorry, my screen wasn't working. So we took consideration the comments of the board the last time and reduced the square footage of the sign. The monument sign is now 53.24 square feet, and the dimensions of the directory sign did not change. It's still 30 square feet per side, and we're still proposing to remove the 120 square foot billboard. Again, the benefits, better way finding, uniformity of signage across the park, and the demarcation of the entrance. On the left side here, you see the previous sign we proposed. It had the bridge detail, which tied into our branding. It was a much larger sign in size. What we've done since then is we've reduced the wall footprint. In order to make this something that made sense, we had to do away with the bridge detail, which counted towards the square footage of the signage. So it was more important for us to emphasize the name of the park so that patrons and tenants can find it. So this is the new, the new design that we're proposing. We've added a capstone detail up top to finish it off nicely, the brick to match the facade of the building, and again, the large wording and lettering. This is a billboard sign that we're proposing to remove. And again, we're adding floodlights to the monument sign here just to add some lighting at night. And the distance from the property line is 30 feet. The way we calculated the square footage of the signage area was by calculating the area of the lettering. That's how we got to the 53.24. The actual size of the wall itself, we capped that at 100 square feet, which I believe would appease a lot of the board members with the feedback we received during the last hearing. So we are clapping the wall at that 100 square feet dimension. The directory signs did not change from the previous presentation. We just wanted to clarify the distance from the property line and the curb. So the property line runs along this tree line. Basically, the sign will be five feet from the property line and nine feet from the curb. We've reviewed this with our vendors. There won't be an issue. It's no removal. The location would be visible from the street coming in and leaving the traffic both ways, both leaving the site and coming into the site. And this is just a summary of the total square footage of signage that will be approved at the site should we be approved. 287 square feet of a currently approved signage. The monument sign and the directory sign would add an additional 83.24 square feet, bringing the total signage square footage to 370.24 for about 180,000 square foot building. Just wanted to present those numbers so the board is aware. It has that in their record. And that is all. Wanted to keep it short, just a refresher, and hopefully you guys are happy with the changes that we've worked on and we've made. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Seth, do you have the new consultant's reports?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, let me go through them now. Okay. Jane Slaven, April 30th, Office of Building Zoning and Planning. She has four comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, dated May 3rd. They have two. Everything else has been read in. I also have a copy of the short EAF dated April 27. Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Mr. Young, questions or comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the efforts made by the applicant on this since their last presentation here. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I'm very happy with the change in the sign. Makes a lot more sense, and the directional sign, I'm glad you clarified it. So it's nine feet from the curb line, which is a lot better than how it originally looked, five feet. And hopefully, the rendering that you showed with the entrance sign on 303, you show plantings there. Hopefully, you'll put them in when you do construct it. So thank you. No further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the applicant and all the changes they made after our comments. I agree. I think the classification on the directional sign is helpful as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Dell?
Thank you, sir. Yes, I agree with the other members. The applicant has done a good job answering our questions. I particularly appreciate the fact the sign is not on pylons. It's fairly low to the, it's obviously on the grade level coming in. The files that have been submitted tonight, I have no problems with, and I wish them luck. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews?
One question. The directional sign, that isn't illuminated, is it? It is not illuminated?
It is not illuminated, no. The lettering itself is sort of reflective, so at night, with the lighting of the cars, people would be able to see it.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to know that because I noticed they changed the signage in the town code, and there was with illuminated directional sign. The distances from the lot lines and everything had changed. So, but other than that, great job. I like the the main sign, the Hudson Crossing, and good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McCory?
Ah, thank you, Chairman. I agree what the other member said, and I'm ready to move this forward. I just have, I guess, administrative question. Did Rockland County Planning ever get back to us with the new plans? Because what we read into the record was they're requesting disapproval in this. I don't know how that's gonna work since it's already read into the record. They never got back with the new plan, Chairman?
The Rockland County Planning, they're only a suggestion to us. We do not have to go by their decision that we can change it, which we did. We, I think the original sign that they came in with was like 154 square feet, and we asked them to be below 100, which they've done. So I think we've kind of satisfied everybody's question.
All right, yeah, I agree. I just want to know if they saw the new plans and got back to us, but that's my only issue. I just said that kind of stuff got there. That's read into the record as a disapproval, and they haven't responded back with the new plans. But that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Bond is here. Okay, I'm sorry. Seth, do you have something to say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. On that point, I would ask Mr. Pacola perhaps to opine on that, because I think procedurally, since the county did not issue another letter to be safe, because it's a jurisdictional issue, I would ask the board to consider transmitting an override to the county by a majority plus one, which hopefully sounds like we're gonna have this evening. But I would defer to counsel on that, but from our perspective, I think we'd feel better if that was formally overridden under 239M.
I would recommend the same. If the board's inclined to approve, that they should override, number one.
Okay, let me find it. Well, when we get to the decisions, I'll bring it up. I just want to find it so I have it. Yeah, okay. Mr. Bond is here now. Mr. Bond, questions or comments?
Yeah, no, the sign looks great, so I have no issues with it, and you know, we do have to override the county on that, so.
Yeah, okay, no problem at all. Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public wish to, have any questions or comments on this? Okay, one more time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Okay, hearing none? I'll ask for a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews closes, makes a motion to close it. Mr. Mandel, second? Okay, all in favor? I, any opposed? No opposition? Okay, the public session's closed. Jane, do they have to come back? I know they have to get Akerbor and ZBA's, what, is there that much on it that they have to come back again?
No, the board can move to grant final with conditions that they obtain the approvals of the other two boards. That is up to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anybody on the board have any reason of not granting them a final with the conditions that they do get approval from ZBA and Akerbor? Is everybody happy with that? Okay, okay, very good. So can I have a motion for, oh. Do we have to reaffirm secret on this? Rick? Or did we do it? Your mic's off.
I can't remember if you accomplished secret at the last meeting or not.
No, I don't believe, I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So let's do secret.
Mr. Chairman, also do secret, and you should override the county.
Yes, we will. When I give two conditions, I had that page out so that we can override. Thank you very much. I have a motion for nobody wants to do lead agent? Nobody wants to do the motion for it?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Mandel, motion.
Mr. Mandel makes a motion for lead agent. Do I have a second?
Andrews, seconds.
Okay, Mr. Young, seconds. All in favor? I. None, okay. Motion for neg deck?
Motion for neg deck, Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel makes the motion for neg deck. Do I have a second?
Mr. Andrews, seconds.
All in favor? I. Any opposed? Can I have a motion with final with conditions?
Motion for final with conditions, Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Andrews makes a motion for final with conditions. The conditions are Jane Slaven, April 30th, she has four comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, May 3rd, he has two comments. And that is all. We have Rockland County Department of Planning dated March 11th. They have disapproved with regards to the signage. A single sided sign may only be equal to or less 30 square feet in an LIO zone district. A 636.6 square foot, this sign is 544% greater than what is permitted. Permitting this oversized sign can be set a precedent and encourage nearby uses along the state highway to request similar exceptions. This can result in proliferation of oversized signs that distract drivers and have an adverse effect on the safe effective flow of traffic along the state highway. If your board finds that the pattern of requests for the oversized signs and that some rationality exists for lessening the town standards, we suggest recommendations to be made to the town board to revise the street standards on parcels that front high volume traffic corridors. Do I have a motion to override Rockland County Planning, number one, for March 11th?
Andrews makes the motion to override.
Mr. Andrews makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. McCory makes the second.
Mr. Mandel.
Favor? I. Any opposed? None. So we've overridden
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt again. Hate to be that guy. But number two, on page two of the memo, refers to the directory sign and also appears to recommend it recommends a modification, so I'm not sure if they're also saying to disapprove that one. It's a little bit unclear. So I would ask that you might consider overriding that one as well, just so there's no, no issues.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Jane on that one. Should we override one and two?
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna recommend number two because it does seem as though they're recommending a 20-foot setback.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
And just on the first one, you have to provide a justification for override. I believe the justification is something along the lines of they've reduced the size. But you do have to justify your override as well.
Okay, so our override, if everybody's agreeable upon it, is number one and number two. Does anybody have any problems with number two? Mr. Dell?
Yes, I think we should say in this that the scale of the signs is appropriate to this particular property, and also too, that the sign is low level, and that also mitigates any problems, and the applicant also, as Rick mentioned, has substantially reduced the square footage.
Okay, you got that, Cheryl?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So there's no problems then overriding number one and number two?
You gotta make Yes. Chairman, you gotta make, the motion's gotta be for one and two. The motion is only for one.
Okay, then I'll change my motions for overriding number one and number two. I will read number two. With regards to the directory monument signs, we are recommending modification for the following reason. Recently, our department received a local law to update the sign code for the town. Within the local law, column five of the Town of General Use Regulations for the LIO Zone District was corrected to fix an error where the sign setback from the lot line was not stated. Currently, this distance is unclear. If the 20-foot setback was adopted, the sign is 75% efficient in meeting this new town law requirement. As located, the sign can be created, can create site distance and traffic study issues. The town must determine a more appropriate location for the signs so that the 20-foot setback can be achieved. Okay, I don't see anything else. So we're gonna add that, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Andrews, go ahead.
The are they talking about our new signage law that just went into effect? The Rockland County Planning with the 20-foot setback?
Yes, Mr. Andrews, I believe that they are, but I don't know that.
Well, according to our new law, that 20-foot setback is only if the line, is only if the sign is illuminated. So.
Honestly, it's sort of a mute point because the new sign law was adopted after this application had already been submitted to the board.
Okay.
So the new sign law would not apply as the application had come in and was already starting the process through the boards.
It's back 30 feet anyway.
Thank you, Jane. No, they're talking about, I think they're talking about a monument sign. Not the monument sign, the directional sign.
The directional sign, right.
The directional signs, you can't put back 20 feet. You never see them. People driving around will never see them.
Right, so the variances, which now have been reduced significantly, are based on the code in place at the time when the applicant submitted their application.
Okay, now let me, Jane, let me ask you a question too. This is a private road, so if they're putting signs up, does it still come under county jurisdiction?
I believe it does because it just falls under the GML because of the reason, the region that it's in, the location. But again, the board can override it, and as the board members have commented, the applicant worked very hard to address your comments from the last meeting.
Yes, they did.
They moved the sign. It was five feet, and now it's nine feet, and they reduced the monument sign at the front.
Yeah, okay. Okay, um, are we legal right now? I mean, Rick, we've done everything. I mean, the way it's happened, do we have to start over again, or?
As long as everyone voted on, I know you made the resolution. Did everyone, I can't remember if they voted on one and two, or if they just voted on one?
I think they only voted on one.
Okay, then you should vote on one and two.
Okay, let's go through the whole thing again. We're voting on overriding number one and number two of Rockland County Planning's March 11th letter. Okay, Mr. Young? Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Mr. Mandel?
Second, yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Dell?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond? Mr. Bond, you got your mic off, but I think you're okay with it. Dave, if you're okay, I can see you.
I'm not voting, right? I'm not voting tonight, right?
Okay, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so with that overridden, and I need a second on the final with conditions. Do I have that?
Final with conditions.
Okay, Mr. Mandel makes the seconds, the final with conditions. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any, any? I don't see any opposition. Sir, you got your sign. Only if Akerbor and ZBA go along with it, okay? That's the condition.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Take care, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Have, be safe.
Thank you, everyone. You too.
Next is PB
Can you share your screen, please, Nicole? Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Next is PB 20-50 Ebenezer Full Gospel Church Building Edition Site Plan. Jane, you here for that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. I can just barely hear you.
Okay, I'll get a little closer. How's that?
Just barely. Do you have your mic on it low?
I do, yeah.
Well, you gotta turn it up a little bit.
I don't I don't wanna adjust my microphone.
There you go. Whatever you did, you did. I can, I can hear you now, so. If I can hear you, everybody else can hear you.
All right, perfect. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This matter was before the board, right before the end of the last year, at which time we had some issues with respect to the zoning, and we were advised by the Building Department that we had to count the basement as floor area, which had an impact on the on the parking calculations and on the floor area ratio. We also took advantage of the time to make changes to the plan to address some of the comments from DEME and some of the drainage issues to air drainage in the overflow parking lot. We took out the athletic field as some of the members of the board were concerned that that was adding to tree removal and to the disturbance area. We added land bank spaces, as we had discussed with the planning board, to provide for some additional parking if it were to be required in the future. The church is very satisfied that the amount of parking that they have on the plan is going to be sufficient, but we added 38 land bank spaces, and we still are short, so we're going to need a variance, and we're going to hopefully, as we get preliminary approval through the board here, we would make an application to the ZBA and then go to the Architecture Review Board, and then address all the other issues, comments, that are some housekeeping comments and some issues with detention basin tweaking as brought up by Mr. DiGennaro and Mr. Bruce Peters. So that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll go through the comments. Office of Building Zoning and Planning, Jane Slaven, April 30th. She has six comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, dated April 16th. His list grew. And I see a lot of it is just housekeeping stuff, but he has 19 comments, 20 comments. We have a letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention May 7th. They have two comments. I have a letter from Booker Engineering, May 11th. The applicant has provided significant information to demonstrate that potential significant adverse impacts with respect to drains can be mitigated. We therefore recommend that the Ebenezer Full Gospel Church Building Additional Site Plan Amendment be approved for drainage subject to above project comments, of which there are seven. Okay, we have Rockland County Planning dated April 19th. We have well, actually, 13. It's 11, 11-1, and 11-2. That's all I have. Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no issue with what the applicant's proposing. Ms. Slaven does, you know, mention three issues that were done without the required approvals. The overflow parking, the retaining wall, and the shed, and the parking variance. If, if there's no issues or violations there, I have no issues with the applicant proceeding.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one question regarding the retaining wall. The plan shows three foot by 50 foot plus or minus. The standard notation for plus or minus usually means one foot plus or minus, is, is that, can you confirm that or clarify it?
Yeah, I think that question was from Jane Slaven's office initially, just to define the length of it. And yes, it's just, it's a low wall to separate the grade where the building is going. And I mean, we can define that more definitively if you need that.
You know, is it 50 feet, or 51 feet, or 55 feet, or 48 feet? Is this 50 feet plus or minus on the plan? Usually.
I would say, we'll, we'll, we'll define it more exact. And I would say it's going to be 50 feet within a foot or two, yes.
Okay, thank you. No further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Mr. Sweeney?
Thank you. Now, my questions were the ones about Jane's comments with the work without approvals. Mr. Young already touched upon that, so I have no other comments.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dell?
Yes, I agree with the comments made by Mr. Mandell, and I'm glad that's clarified. I assumed that was the case. I've noted that you removed the existing McAdam access drive. That's good because I had a great deal of concerns about that in terms of safety due to its width and its placement. So I have no problems with this, but I would like to, of course, reserve additional comments in case the community has any concerns, because obviously they're on a different basis, far more familiar with it than we can be. But otherwise, I think it seems to certainly be within the acceptable range. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Andrews?
After listening to all the comments made by the other board members, I agree with them, and everything looks good, as far as I can see. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bond?
I'm, I'm okay with it.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McCory?
You can't forget about me, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize. I'm sorry.
No, no problem. I know I had concerns about that ball field that was going up there, and you addressed that. So the trees are remaining in place. I'm just, I'm looking at the plans, I got a very small plan there. Are there any trees being taken down on the, I guess that would be on the southwest border of the project? I don't see any on the, on the, on the plans.
That's pretty much all lawn area there, as shown on the map. That's correct. There's a, there's a very wide swath that is the sewer district easement, and there are no trees in there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, lower, lower your, your mouse down, yeah, down to that corner where the closest, where the building will be to the property lines. That's, that's 44 feet?
No, that's actually a road, that, that's, that road is, is existing.
Yeah, so, so that existing road goes around, and you're building within that, that road, so there's gonna be no, the, the tree buffers aren't gonna be touched on the, along the property lines, correct?
No, no. The, the road that's there, that's shown, that already exists. And this, the area where the, the proposed building expansion is at the south end of the church, there's no trees in there. There's a concrete pad in there and some gravel.
All right, yeah, that's, that's good then. That's, that's one of our concerns.
Right.
That's always our concerns when it's in a residential area, and make sure the buffers are stayed, and so, I, I have, I have no concerns, but I'd like to hear what the public says, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Anybody from the public, I'm gonna open up to the public, anybody from the public who wants to speak on this? Yes, ma'am, state your name and your address for the record.
Hi, this is Vanessa Lappins at 659 Western Highway from coupon Hamlets of Orange Town. I just wanted to thank both the church and the board for coming together with a new proposal that eliminates the ball field and the encroachment on the watershed and the taking down of the trees. So I think this is a great compromise that makes everybody, you know, it makes, everybody doesn't get 100% of what they want, but everybody gets a lot of what they want, so I wanted to just say thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, does anybody else have any questions or comment on this project? One more time, anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close public portion.
Mr. Mandell makes motion to close the public. Do I have a second?
Andrews, seconds.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
None. Okay, thank you very much. So I think they've done their homework, I think we could let them move on. So I'm asking for a, a motion for lead agent.
Motion for lead agent.
Okay, Mr. Young makes a motion for lead agent. He beat your mic by two seconds, he had his hand up right before you.
Okay, I second.
Okay, Mike, Mr. Mandell seconds the lead agent. Do I have a motion for a neg deck?
Motion for.
I'm gonna vote on the motion for lead agent.
Oh, God, technical, technical. Okay, all in favor of lead agent, say aye. Okay, any opposed?
Aye.
No, no opposition. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Okay, do I have a motion for a neg deck? Mr. Mandell makes. Do I have a second?
Mr. Sweeney, seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, thank you very much. Can I have a motion for preliminary with conditions? Mr. Young makes a motion for preliminary with conditions, and the conditions are, Office of Buildings, Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, April 30th. She has six comments. Office of Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, April 16th. He has 20 comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, May 7th. They have two. Booker Engineering, May 11th. They have seven. Rockland County Planning, April 9th. They have, I don't know if you wanna call 13 or 11, 11-1, 11-2. I think that covers everything. And I think that's all. Is there anything else, Cheryl?
Do you wanna pick up any of the letters from the November meeting?
Okay, God, because I, I have the notation, she said it was already read in, but I will go ahead and put them all in. I have a letter from, from Jay Greenwell, September 17th, which is a narrative. Because I think the, like Jane Slaven, November 9th, I think that was all read in.
I'm talking about Rockland County Drainage.
Oh, okay, very good. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Rocket County Planning, October 16th. They have 10 comments. Rocket County Drainage, dated October 14th. They have a letter about the Stream Control Act and a permit. Okay, I have a letter from Rockland County Sewer District Number One, November 10th. They have three plus, one, two, three, four sub-items, three items and four sub-items. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA, allowing us, dated 10-7, allowing us to be lead agent. Rocket County Highway, dated 10-9-20, consenting us to be lead agent. Rocket County Planning, us to be lead agent, dated 10-8. I have a letter from Rocket County Highway, dated 10-7, this project is out of our jurisdiction. I have a letter from Orange Town ZBA, dated 10-7, no further correspondence, and that's it. Okay, Cheryl, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Mandell.
Mr. Mandell, seconds, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition. Okay, Jay, you got your preliminary, thank you. Good luck with it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good night.
Good night. Stay safe.
You too, thank you.
Okay, next item is PB 21-08, 3 Tweed Boulevard, Site Plan and Critical Area, Environmental Area. Paul, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, you wanna give us an explanation?
I guess the last time we were before the board, there were a couple of issues that we needed to address. We believe we've addressed most of those issues, there's a couple minor things that need to be taken care of, but all the major issues have been addressed.
Okay, thank you. Consulting consultant reports. Okay, Office of Buildings, Zone and Planning, Jane Slaven, April 30th. She has four comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, dated April 16th. Bruce Peters, he has eight comments. I also have a letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, May 4th. They have one comment. Okay, I have a letter from Rockland County Environmental Resources, dated 4/12/21. Saying no further correspondence for the site, is to be sent to the agency. And Cheryl, the note you gave me says everybody else has been read in. Is there anything else, Cheryl?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna open it up to the board. Mr. Young, questions or comments?
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mandell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You see, you added a landscaping plan. Will there be a second retaining wall between the?
You, you broke up what?
Jason, to the patio and at the end of the landscape area? Regarding the landscaping area, it looks quite good on the, can you hear me?
Yeah, now I hear you.
Hello?
Yeah, we hear you, Mike.
Okay, I said the landscaping plan, okay, looks great. Question is, you have a retaining wall at the edge of the patio. Are you gonna be building a secondary retaining wall at the end of the landscaped area, or is that just gonna slope normally?
That's gonna slope normally.
Okay, second, the plan does not show the patio dimensions. It was requested at the 2021 meeting. This is problem number two. It's been requested again. What are the dimensions that should be on the plan?
Yeah, we have no issue with providing the dimensions, we'll do that.
Must've said last time, but we're still looking for them. Director Slaven, just a question. On the retaining wall they're proposing, it's two and a half feet. So it would go back to the previous regulations of the town. It wouldn't be the less than four feet, you wouldn't have to show a design. We still have to show a design going back since it's under the previous regulations?
Even the previous regulations, if it was under four feet, it did not have to be engineered.
Okay, all right, thank you. No further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mandell. Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
I have no additional questions at this time.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Dell?
Yes, sir. My main concern is on the easterly border, the downslope side of the silhouettes. In a situation like this, I think we should have woven wire to reinforce it and also stake hay bales in front of it. And that's particularly important because this is very close to the property line. This is something we've required many times over many years, and I just will not feel comfortable going forward with that unless this standard condition is fulfilled to protect the environment in the area and to protect the neighbor to the east. Thank you.
We have no, we have no issue with that.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Mandell? No? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Andrews?
I have no comments, so I'm good with everything right now.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. McCory, I'm not missing you.
Thank you, Chairman, appreciate that. Um, I, I like the landscaping plan. I don't think we had that last time, and we have the retaining wall on the plans. As long as you go to all the conditions, and with Mr. Dell's request of the hay bales, I'm, I'm good with this, so no, no further comments from me.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, Mr. Bond?
I'm good with it.
You, you're okay with it, okay? Because you had your, I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public session. Anybody from the public who wants to speak on this? Okay, one more time, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Hearing none, I'm gonna ask for a motion to close the public session. Mr. Young makes a motion to close the public session. Do I have a second? Mr. Mandell, seconds.
Mr. Mandell, seconds.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, sir. Again, Jane, is, is. I, I don't see a whole heck of a lot on this, Jane. Again, I know it's listed, preliminary, prepreliminary, and final. I don't, I don't, I don't know. What's the board feeling on this? Do we wanna give them a final with conditions? Because there's not a whole heck of a lot here. Mr. Young, what do you think?
Mr. Mandell brought up a good point. We're still waiting for the patio dimensions. I, I don't have a problem per se. Getting tired of asking for some of this information and not getting what we've asked for, but I mean, I can let it go to final.
No, I understand. I mean, we've asked for it a few times. Paul, is there any reason why we're not getting that information?
No, there's no specific reason, it's just, it was just neglected, but it's not a big deal. If you could grant, if we granted final, it'll be on the plan that we, you know, that for the final.
Without the dimensions, you know, you can move that pool, you know, east-west. You know, if we had the dimensions, it pretty much locks things in, that's, that's the only question.
But the drain, the drainage report is based on a certain amount of patio, so that no matter what, that patio is gonna stay that size, and it won't, we won't change the layout of the patio as it's shown on there.
Okay.
Can I have to mention the impervious service?
Yep. Paul, you, you can see everybody's concern. Like I said, you asked, we were asked for it last time you were here, and we still haven't got it. If I may make a suggestion to you, is you ask for a continuation, and you can get right back on the agenda soon as you come up with the dimensions on the patio, and I think if you can satisfy the board's concerns with that, I, I, I think you'll have no problem whatsoever. And a little bit of things that, while you're doing that, a few things, minor things that are here, if you can get them resolved, I think you'll have no issues.
If, if that's, if that's the board's desire, that's fine.
It, it's, it's a suggestion to you, you have to ask for it, we can't tell you to do it. All I'm saying to you is that the board is, has a concern now with the patio dimensions. And, and rightfully so, so, and, and we've asked, if this was the first time asking for it, I can. And rightfully so, so, and we've asked, if this was the first time asking for it, I can see you be, you know, concerned. But we've asked you for it last time, so we still don't have it. So I think if you get that, give that to us, I think we would all be a lot happier.
My client's on the, on the, on the, you know, I'd like him to address what his thought is.
Good evening, guys. How are you? Because I'm Paul, the owner.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
And how would I put it? The patio, I don't care really how small it is. I just want to get like preliminary to get the plans going, you know what I mean? Because I brought this, you know, like, I don't care how small the patio, it's just a we're not going with a big patio. It's just that little place for seating in the front of it. It's the, grass is more my concern than patio, you know what I mean? Because we're a retired couple, you know what I mean? We're not, we're not going with a big patio, so I don't know if we can put restrictions on the patio, so, because I'd really like to get going with this, because I was told in February that I would get final. I know it's not, you know, we're working ready, but for something so small, I'd hate to be delayed back months again, because I'd really like to get the ball rolling, if you like, but I'm not going looking for a big patio. I can assure you that. If there's a restriction, I have no problem in confining to the restriction. And the pool is not getting moved, because it's, it's right in front of the deck, in line with the house. The measurements off the house are there. That's exactly where the pool is going. I don't understand why the, I get your point. I don't understand why the dimensions are there, because I've talked this over and back, maybe fifty times with Cool Pool to make sure everything was ready. And I just feel that if we go back again, I'm going to lose the whole summer without getting anything done, you know what I mean? Because I have to go back for preliminary and final. I, I, I get every, I get everybody's concern, but, you know, I mean, if, if you guys can give me something and restrict me, and we make sure with Paul and with the engineer for Cool Pool and everything, that we will, you know, it's not like I'm going to build, patio is not my concern. It's just the pool, I'd love to get the pool going this summer, because my whole backyard is nothing until I start, you know, it's a mess right now, because it's all dug up for the percolation tests and everything. It's just, it's a mess right now, and I'd love to get moving forward. But obviously, I know my wishes are not, you know, everything has to be done, but I don't understand why, I don't understand why the dimensions are not on. It's, the ball was dropped by somebody, and I've been pushing so hard, everybody involved, to make sure they had everything ready for tonight. And actually, it's a bummer to think that for something, someone, someone neglected this is going to put me right back months again, you know? Because the last time I was up was months ago, and I was still okay.
Okay.
I don't understand the planning in this.
Okay, if I may say, theoretically, it won't put you back months. If you ask for a continuation, if you have, whomever has to measure the patio, puts it on a plan, you'll be back in two weeks. The reason why we're concerned is the last time you were here, which was well, it was last, it was, yeah, it was in early February, we asked for that at that time. What you're saying. So if, if you ask for a continuation, and you have your architect or whomever, get it on the plans, call Cheryl up tomorrow, and in two weeks, you'll be back on here, and at that time, you'll probably get what you want. Mr. McCoury?
What I mean?
Chairman, just a question. On the drainage plans stamped May twelfth, it looks like there are dimensions. Did everybody get these plans? Jane, is that sufficient?
No, that's why my comment's there.
All right, just wanted to make sure, because I'm seeing dimensions. I wasn't sure if that was what, what we were talking about here.
I mean, the drainage.
Mr. McLaughlin, if I can explain, it's a critical environmental area, and just from a layman's perspective, if I picked up this plan and had to go out in the field right now, I could not build the patio. There's not enough information for me to construct it dimension-wise. So I think, again, the recommendation of the board is that you ask for continuation. We put you on in two weeks. And as long as the information comes in, which I can work with Mr. Gudansky to make sure everything's on there, there shouldn't be an issue. I don't think that the board has an issue with the proposed plan. However, there's additional information needed.
All right, in two weeks, as long as we can make the meeting in two weeks, that's fine.
Right, so Paul, you need to get the stuff into us, you know, say by Monday or so.
There are a lot of people that should have it on it.
All right, Mr. McLaughlin, again, this process, if you can, let me finish. Paul, if you get the information on the drawings, and we, we actually are going to have PRC next Wednesday, so hopefully, you know, we have everything and everything's good. It'll be just a vote next, on the twenty-sixth, which is the next meeting, which is two weeks.
All right, that's no problem.
Okay, Mr. Dell has the comments.
Yes, just obviously amend the plan to detail the plan to show the woven wire and the state hay bales on the easterly end of your silk fence. Just have it.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Okay, you add. Okay, yes, I agree, Mr. Dell, and I think Mr. Gudans said that that's on the plans for the next meeting.
Don't say it's on the plans for the next meeting. I have no problems. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so Mr. McLaughlin, hopefully, in two weeks, you got your, your approval, okay? I can see you shaking your head.
Thank you.
Call your, call whomever up and tell them.
Tom, he needs to ask for continuance, though.
Excuse me?
He needs to ask for the continuance.
Would like to request continuance to the two weeks?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not guaranteeing two weeks. If it works out, it works out. I, you asked me for a continuation, we'll get on the next available agenda. Hopefully, it's two weeks. I can guarantee it. I don't know what's on the agenda. What's already, it's already set.
If they get the information, we can put them on in two weeks.
Okay.
We're good with that. Okay.
Okay, okay, Mr. Gudans.
All right, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you. Okay, yes, have a good night. Stay safe, everyone. Okay, next, PB twenty-one dash two, the Johnson Site Plan Critical Environmental Area.
Hello? I'm, am I on?
Hi, Susan. I didn't see you there. Okay.
All right. I'm here. I'm Suzy Johnston. I'm one of the owners of the property at one fifty-five Tweed Boulevard, and Jeff Johnston is the other owner. He's here as well. I also have on hand Christian Ortiz, who's our architect, and Cole Ruby, who is our contractor. And I will be deferring any technical questions to those two. This project, we were last in front of the board on January thirteenth, and we did not finish a presentation of the project, because we had some information we were missing. And so we just stopped, and we needed to get some things in order, which included a new survey, which we now have, a new survey of the property that is up to date, and also some revisions to the, the building plan and the construction plan, and those have been done as well. I think Ms. Slaven had some, some comments for us that we also responded to at two, in two different instances. The project covers a three hundred square foot portion of our concrete driveway with trex decking. The driveway is under the frame of the deck with no excavation. It sits directly on the concrete. There is, in addition, a six by twelve foot extension, which is at the same elevation, that sits on an existing concrete retaining wall. It covers the, the extension, the small extension covers a natural slope, which is undisturbed, other than two concrete footings. And if it suits you, I'd like to show you a few pictures, which might make this a little more clear. Does that sound okay? Share screen. I got to figure that out. Am I able to do that? There we go.
Yeah.
Yes, you are. You're the presenter.
All right, then I'm going to do it. I think. Oh, I'm getting a system preferences issue. Maybe I'll have maybe something up with my, my system. Jeff, you have these slides on yours. I'm going to go ahead and do it. I think my computer's not cooperating. Can we switch to my husband as presenter? I think he can. We're also getting accessibility issues.
He is, he's the presenter.
Okay, thanks. Say no now. Well, we're both getting system preferences issues for this. Doesn't want to share.
Okay, Suzy, you both can't be presenters. It's one or the other, so.
No, I understand, and he's, he's presenter now, because I thought his computer might work better. But it doesn't seem to be sharing either. There's some kind of security privacy. He's on it. What do you want to share? Because I have some stuff here. The photos?
Christian? I have the, I have the plans.
Yeah.
Probably get the photo.
Well, I think I'll just, I'll talk you through it. I apologize for this. You share those, Christian, in the meantime, so we don't take any more of their time than we need to. All right, I'll go back and be the presenter again.
Okay.
Right. Thanks for your patience. This driveway is a, it's a long extended driveway, and at the end of the drive, at the end of the driveway, we decided that it would be useful to cover about three hundred square feet of the, the, the drive, of the end of the driveway. It's just hard without the pictures. It was just for extra parking. The driveway was somewhat unsightly. We wanted to beautify the property. And we also have grandchildren living with us. We wanted a nice, safe place for them to play. We did begin without a permit, believing since this was covering existing concrete, that that wasn't necessary, and we very quickly learned that, that we were wrong. And we've been trying to get it right ever since. So the, the decking is halfway finished. About, I guess around a hundred fifty square feet of the deck is covering the driveway, and the rest of it is simply framed. And so we have open framing on the property. We were asked to stop on August fifth, and we did. And it's been that way ever since. The overhang that extends beyond the concrete driveway sits on an existing concrete wall. It's six by twelve feet, is supported by the retaining wall and two four by four posts. I know Cole could address, I think that's on the, the building plan, has those details. The slope is undisturbed, and right now, it's just, it's sitting there waiting to be finished. I would entertain questions from you, ask what else it is you need from us, what, what needs to be answered tonight from your point of view.
Okay, let me go through and go through the consultant reports, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, Jane Slaven, Office of Buildings, Zone and Planning, April thirtieth. She has four comments. It looks like I'm going to go through it again anyway, because I believe everybody else has read in, but I'll just go through it again. Jane Slaven, on January eighth, had nine comments. Okay, which I was, this is what I was looking for, and I was surprised. Bruce Peters, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, January twelfth. He only has one comment, and he has just no comment. Okay, so the only thing that we're Mr. Beckman, Fire Prevention, no comments. Rocket County Planning, December third, two thousand twenty, has two comments. Rocket County Highway, November twentieth, two thousand twenty, has three comments. Rocket County Sewing District, number one, January fifth, two thousand twenty-one, has two comments. And I have project history by Jeff and Susan Johnson, and it's, it's not dated, but the last entry in it for March thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Okay, Cheryl, is there anything else?
That's it, Tom.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to open it up to the board. Mr. Young, questions and comments?
Uh, no comments really, Mr. Chairman, other than the applicant has to go and get some variances. But I have no issues with the project per se.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mandel?
I have no problems with the project. They're going to have to have a CPA for the variances, as Mr. Young stated. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Sweeney?
Similar. I have no comments, questions, or concerns at this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Dell?
Yes, I realize there's very little going on here in terms of construction and site disturbance. However, usually we get these at one inch equals twenty scale for something like this, particularly when the entire lot is over twenty-five percent slope. Would be nice if there were a few contours in the area, too. My biggest question is, because this is a kind of a, an interesting situation, question for Ms. Slaven. Do you feel the building department has enough information to have this built in an appropriate manner?
Yes, there's a whole nother architectural drawing with details on how the deck is to be constructed.
Now, I saw that, but I just wanted to make sure, because obviously, it's, I don't see many, no side elevations or anything else on this. But because they're basically building it on top of the wall, you feel comfortable with this. Is that true?
Yes, I think we're comfortable with it, and the submission is much more information was presented this time than was the first go around, and it's accurate as far as the dimensions, so.
Okay, and I assume the applicant has an easement over the property to the south for their access to their driveway? Is that correct?
I don't know that. It's there.
The applicant, and does yet have a professional with him who can answer that? Because right now, you're showing the driveway going over the property, I believe, to the south here, where it reaches Tweed Boulevard.
Yeah, that's the private is built in nineteen sixty-six. So I'm not sure what to say about that.
Yeah.
It's because it's built in nineteen ninety-six doesn't mean the easement is not required. There may indeed be one. I, I think we can clarify that, but again, I would defer to Ms. Slaven. If they're comfortable going ahead with this, I won't oppose it.
I don't see an issue with it. It's been there for a very long time.
Okay. Does the deputy town attorney have any issues with it?
The planning board obviously doesn't have any control over who owns the land. If they don't own the land, obviously, that's problematic, but as Ms. Slaven has said, and the applicant has said, it's been there for a very long time, so I don't have any legal issue with proceedings.
Okay, thank you.
I, I understand what everyone's saying. I'm willing to go ahead with this, but for the record, I want to express as a caveat if it wasn't for the uniqueness of the amount of disturbance here, we would need quite a bit more information on this plan, including grades, et cetera. But okay, thank you very much. But okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dell. Mr. Andrews?
I'm good with it right now.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McCory?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Like mentioned before, it's a unique property, so you can kinda see why that's, that's the spot, the only spot for the deck really and, uh, it's being built over the driveway that's existing, so I, I don't see much with this. So I, I have no issues with this, so thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I have no issues with it.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna open it up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this comment, on this project? Okay, one more time, anybody from the public wish to speak on this project? Ms. Slaven, okay, can I have a motion to close the public session? Mr. Mandel makes the motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Andrews seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None, okay, to the public. Okay, um, okay, a motion for lead agent. I think we should give them preliminary so they can go to ZBA to let them get their variances and if they do, then they can come back. Okay, uh...
Motion for lead agency.
Lead agent, okay, Mr. Mandel seconds. All in favor? Aye. Any, none. Okay, a motion for a neg deck. Mr. McCory makes a motion for a deck. Mr. Andrews seconds.
Second.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, uh, motion for preliminary with condition. Mr. Mandel, thank you, sir. Uh, conditions are...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
This may be one that the board would, might want to consider giving final.
Yeah, I was thinking about that, but I, I, do we, I'm concerned with those variances.
They're on ZBA.
They do have to go to ZBA.
Yeah, I understand that. I was gonna give...
But if they get their, if they get their variances, is there a reason for them to come back?
No, not really. Okay, uh, Mr. Mandel, would you like to change your motion to a final with conditions?
He froze.
Okay, Mr. Mandel makes a motion for a final with conditions and the conditions are, uh, Office of Building's...
I did not make the motion.
Oh, you didn't?
Chairman, no. He froze. I said no. I'm not making a motion for final.
He's not.
I'm making a motion for preliminary.
Well, the first was preliminary, but we, Ms. Slaven said that we could go to final with conditions that they get ZBA approval, which we've done in the past. And if they don't get the approval, they can't do the project. If they get the approval, then they're good to go. Is there, is there any, there's really no reason for them to come back, because it's just minimal as to what they have to do. So, so does anybody wish to make a motion for final with conditions? Mr. Young makes a motion final with conditions and the conditions are, Jane Slaven, Building Zoning and Planning, April 30th, she has four comments and I believe that is all. Okay? Do I have a second? Mr. Sweeney makes a second. All in favor? Aye. Is there any opposition?
Mr. Mandel, negative.
Mr. Mandel, did you oppose to it?
Yes.
Yeah, Paul is, I think it's just a bad precedent, but it's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is anybody else, so you have your final with conditions. Good luck with your project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Slaven and the board.
Thank you, Ms. Slaven.
Okay, um, what was I gonna say? Oh, I'm losing it. Okay, um, I think we have minutes, Cheryl, from the last meeting?
Yes, we do.
Okay, can I have a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Mr. Andrews makes a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Andrews. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mandel.
Mr. Mandel seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Tom Sweeney, I'm gonna abstain, I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney abstains. Okay, Mr. Bond, you could actually vote on that. Do you approve the minutes?
Yeah, I'm good with them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. Okay, can I have a motion to, uh, close the meeting? Adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Mr. Mandel makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Andrews seconds.
Mr. Andrews seconds. All in favor? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.